I call the meeting to order at 12:35. Special meeting of the Board of Trustees of SUNY Erie Community College. I thank all six trustees who are here and everyone else involved. Appreciate that. We may, I don't know if we'll have any other attendees, but with six present. And Carrie, if you're able, can you call the roll? Do you, are you, you have the list in front of you or you want us to do it?
I have it, thanks. Melody Baker.
Present.
Ken Crewley.
Here.
Len Lenahan.
Here.
Amanda Lau. Absent. Candace Morrison. Absent. Carrie Phillips here. Jeffrey Stone.
Here.
Marcel Suarez-Pinero.
Here.
Okay.
Thank you. Apparently, we have a quorum, so declare the meeting open. We have only a fairly limited agenda here. What we're doing, Adiam and I have had a little discussion about a few things as we do every week. We're going to do this meeting at 12:30 and take some actions not actually an executive session. There's nothing secretive or that fall within the category, so we can just take, take action in open meetings, but we did need to meet between meetings just based on some time and urgency issues on a couple of fronts. And we'll hear any updates that we can from our officer in charge. Kathy will report on the contract that we've been asked to approve here so it can be sent to the legislature. And at one o'clock, we will carry on, we, some of us, with county officials who will be involved. And I understand we've got Ben Swanacamp and Tim Callen and...
Jessica Schuster.
Jessica Schuster from the comptrollers office. And this is at the behest of Ken Crewley, who was, you know, focusing on chargebacks. And we are always thinking and talking about chargebacks, but this, we wanted to take it to the next level above county folks and think about an advertising strategy to try to reverse some of those losses. So, Dr. Segai, what would you like to propose first?
Thank you so much. Good afternoon, everyone. We will be talking about our Huron. As you know, we did a lot of work as it relates to workday, and now we are in a position to ask the board for their approval, and I'll have Kathy DeLesto present to you the resolution that we're asking the board to approve.
I have two resolutions before you today. The first is a resolution for Huron Consulting Group Professional Services Agreement. We've been working under the 2018 IBM Master Services Agreement that was adopted by Huron Consulting Group, and we are, under the guidance of the Erie County Attorney, formalizing our next sequence of work under a specific professional services agreement exclusive to Huron Consulting Group.
Is the prior contract terminated then, the IBM one, or is that continuing at some point?
Correct. It will be.
Okay. This will be what guides our Huron activity and work going forward?
It will be.
At this point?
Mm-hmm.
And the cost of this project, of this contract, has been calculated into the respective costs of banner implementation, have we done it, and the workday?
Well, the professional services agreement is separate from the statement of work, so the professional services agreement has no monetary, it just establishes our relationship.
I see, okay. So the statement of work is where we pick up the costs?
Yes. That'll be the second item.
Questions from anyone?
Seems like it's pretty clear that's the direction we're standing, moving.
Yes, yes. Dr. Segai, anything else on that front? Got a motion then?
I'll move it.
To approve, thank you, Ken. Any further discussion? No, then all in favor, please say aye.
Aye, aye.
Thank you, aye.
All.
Any opposed? unanimous vote to move forward with that, and that will go to the, no, that will not go to the legislature because it doesn't involve costs, right?
I believe both of these will be going to the ledge.
Just...
Even though it doesn't have costs associated, it's to supplement the next item.
Okay, give them the full...
Yeah, to give them the full picture. So the statement of work with Huron is the continuation of our post-production support and the optimization that we determined is needed to allow the college to function effectively and efficiently in the workday platform. This is a three-year engagement with Huron Consulting Group that has a minimum expenditure of $2 million and a not to exceed $4 million. The actual terms of that contract are still being worked on with Leslie and the legal team at Huron Consultants, but Leslie assures us that it'll be in substantially the same form as it was submitted to you today. The term, the financials will not change, just the legalities of about how, how we're getting billed and things like that.
Okay. And to my prior question, the costs involved with this, between two and four, were part of the balancing and the review that, that was done as we compared...
Correct.
...the two paths we could have taken.
Yes.
Stay with the banner transition or remain with work.
Right, and that's the third whereas here that I think is on there still. It's a savings of $14 million in comparison to if we had gone forward with the banner implementation.
Broadly speaking, that's about the difference between $32 million and $18 million-ish?
Yes.
Okay. All right. I think this is a subject that we've discussed at great length both at this table for many months and at the legislature recently, and we all went there and met both with the Community Enrichment Committee and the full legislature to explain and answer questions. So I think at this point, we're really formalizing what we've...
I've done more conversation with the legislature.
You know, kind of, it was, it was good. We had the, we had the meeting the day before, legislator Gilmore and his staff. We went through everything in great detail, and then the committee report came and the, all the legislators were there, and we all talked afterwards about it. They asked some good questions, but I think the overall tone was played good and understanding once all the facts were shared, and I think Adiam and Kathy and Arda were there with me, and I do know they were very appreciative of, because I was told, several of them said, "It's really great that four of you came over, you had your board chair, you had your officer in charge, and folks who are closest to the facts." So I think they really appreciated it, and this, what we want, all agreed should be done. Anything to add on that, Adiam?
No, I think, I think part of the, the presentation was that we will continuously provide the board and the legislator with data to support the actions that were taken as it relates to it, so that is something that the college assured that we will constantly update them appropriately with the data evidence to show our progress.
I thought the questions were, they evidenced a desire to support the college, but also a desire to understand exactly what we're doing and why, and they were satisfied. Any further questions? Discussion? All right, then I think a motion to accept the statement of work and approve it for submission to the legislature.
Second.
Second, okay. Discussion? If no, then all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? unanimous vote to move that item to the ledge for their approval?
Thank you.
And that has to do with the, we all know, the legislature's retained authority to approve contracts in excess of $50,000. All right.
Well, thank you so much. The second item that we would like to present to the board, as you know, with our HR, it's an important part of the college, and we need to invest, as we are investing in every part of our college, the, the right skill set and the right leadership, and I'm happy to say today that we were able to find someone within the college. As you know, one of my goal is to find talent within the college, well-credentialed, well-skilled, to move the college in the right direction. So I would like to present the board with Maureen Ringer. She has been with the college since 2017, payroll manager, it was her position. I would like to propose that we promote her to an interim director of human resource, that would be on the senior leadership team. Maureen has demonstrated excellent work skill. She's well-organized, well-respected by the college community. She has done a great job on the payroll side. We have no complaint on the payroll side because of Maureen's leadership, but really, I would like to highlight her ability to have the utmost respect from all, from all of the unions of the college as well, as well as the entire college community. So I'm asking the board, the board to approve her interim director of human resource, as we are constantly doing analysis of that area to see what other support we need, but I think Maureen brings a tremendous skill to, to the college, but also to our leadership team, so I'm asking for the board to approve Maureen to this position.
Okay. Yeah, go ahead.
So we talked about in the past, so this is an interim situation.
Yes.
Certainly sounds like she's qualified to do that.
Yes.
But we also talked about, we may be looking at upgrading this position, perhaps with some legal background. Not necessarily decided yet, but...
Yes.
We're kicking around a couple ideas.
I think leaning strongly in that direction, I would say.
Absolutely. I think part of the work that we are still doing now, I also want to mention that Maureen is going to be working with our legal team, because we... because we do still need that, as well as the person that we have dedicated from the county. So we're going to work in conjunction with the county legal team, as well as our private legal team that we have to make sure that we're doing the right thing with, as relates to HR. As you know, the HR side of the college is key into our success. So we will be doing a lot of analysis first, as well as really looking into that VP of Legal Affairs and HR. So that is still for discussion. But we wanted to make sure that operationally, that we have a strong person to lead the HR department in the right direction.
So would it be possible to hire a VP of Human Resources and perhaps legal, essentially at the level of Dr. Cynthia Lewis, senior executive staff, which would also coexist with Maureen in this position?
That's absolutely a consideration. We do want to take the time to really look at it in terms of the optimizing of HR and Workday. That is one of the area that I think and I believe that the college has an opportunity to optimize Workday. I would suggest that at this point, we did not optimize Workday as relates to HR, and it is an HR platform. So I think that that will also change the composite and the need of the HR department as we know it today. So the goal is to really do this simultaneously and really make an assessment and then come back with a recommendation, what is in the best interest of the college going forward.
But in the meantime, you believe Maureen fills a vital role now and can be part of the picture at some point as you continue to think about this.
Absolutely. I think, like I said, she brings a lot of wealth of experience. And I think there is an opportunity to have an HR where there is a component of it, where it's, there's some division. But I do believe there needs to be an oversight, so that will happen over time.
Okay. Other trustees, any questions on screen or Carrie or Melody? Anyone else? All right, then you were looking for a resolution to approve this hiring, and this is at the board level because...
Because it's a leadership position?
Yes, but not exactly, is it senior executive staff? It is, okay.
Yes.
Then that, that is something that we have had through, for several years at least, the power and the requirement that we approve that. So may I then have a motion for the approval of this job description for Maureen as presented?
Salute.
Second, thank you. Any further discussion? No, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Closed? Again, unanimously approved. Congratulations to Maureen.
Yes, absolutely.
I hope she can come to our next meeting of the board.
She will.
Good, good. And then, yes, keep us posted. I know in our weekly calls, Dr. Sagai and I are always talking about exactly what's going on in human resources, where we have issues, where we have possibilities, different approaches. So this is somewhat in flux and a subject of great thought, I know, on your part. So we want to be supportive of that and want to make sure that we wind up with the right array at the end so that we have, you know, a very healthy relationship with the people who work here and that we conduct ourselves in a way that leads to greater efficiency and less disputes.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything else?
Okay.
Len, we've had the loss of a very significant community figure close to you. Can you talk about Joan Bozer?
Yeah, Joan Bozer, who was very instrumental in the development of the city campus. I was at Ludslaw at the time, I think, Ken, you were the chief of staff at the time. And, you know, Joan was a unique person in that, it's funny, at the time, she was lined up as a Republican and we were on the Democratic side, and it was a lot of support for the city campus. But Joan was just an unwavering advocate for quality of life issues. But certainly at the center of that was this need to have a substantial, you know, building or campus for the city campus of Erie Community College. At the time, we had this little building on Main Street that was like somebody's house.
Joan Bozer's high school.
Right, yeah. And then there were some just crazy ideas about, one person wanted to put it out on Elmwood near Kemper Avenue. But the bottom line was Joan prevailed, along with, you know, Minnie Gillette and others, Mary Little Wrath. But without a doubt, the person who was instrumental in really leading that charge was Joan Bozer. Of course, she went on, she served 18 years. I was, I was actually with her every day of her 18 years. I was in the Ludslaw, and I left shortly after she did. But she did so many other things as well. I mean, just if you look around this community, the Olmstead parts, you know...
Garden walks they talked about in the...
Sorry?
The garden walks.
Yeah, the garden walks. The, and most recently, in her 90s, the carousel on the waterfront, charged with, I think, some green energy is, is charged, and that was her last major project. But, you know, support for the arts and environmental leadership. So it went on and on. So for some time, and Jeff can verify, you know, a couple of the last presidents, I, I said, "We really need," Joan's now in her 90s, "we need to, you know, name one of this, some aspect of the city campus in Joan's honor." And it was always, you know, Minnie Gillette, the autotron was named in her honor. But the atrium, which is really the beauty personification of what the city campus is about, you know, I have thought, and others, not just myself, but others have thought, that we need to, you know, to make that call on her behalf. So it got tied up in a lot of different development directors and head of the foundation and two of our last couple presidents, Dan Akroyd and Balkan, wanted, you know, "We need to make a lot of money on this" and so forth. And, you know, the city campus has now been there about 40, 45 years. It would never, you know, nobody's come forward with a million dollars to name the atrium. So it's been, my feeling is, is we'll always be looking for ways to, here we got the, the science building, we've got the stone building, I should say, it hasn't been named yet. There's a lot of other areas, but I think we need to make a decision to honor Joan.
I agree totally with what Len is saying, both about Joan as a person and a legislator and wanting to honor her in some way. And if, if the atrium hasn't been named for anybody in 40 years, I think it's time to move on. So I would strongly support trying to do that.
Well, why don't we leave that there? We don't have to decide that quite today.
Right, right.
But I think as we're going through the process of looking at our city post office building, bringing it back online, this would be the right time to bring something over the finish line that's appropriate for legislator Joan Bozer, who I'm pretty good friends with, her son Alan.
Right.
And, yeah, I just, you know, just as a 40-year observer of the profession scene in Buffalo, she's a titan in terms of...
Absolutely. So in, in, you know, we, before we go on any further on this at a future meeting, we want to touch base with her family and, you know, we should talk to Alan and...
We'll get something done.
Right. But I think, you know, in light of this, you know, I think it should be sooner than later.
Yes.
Because we, I think we've waited too long, frankly, but...
And we're sending communication to the college community shortly so that for those who don't know her history and her legacy, so we'll have that communicated out to the college community shortly.
Right, and any trustees who would like to take a look at that? Before it goes out, Len, I think you already may have looked at it.
I did, I did look at it. Very nicely.
It's lovely, but I think it gives you a good sense of who Joan was. God bless her. Anything else?
Good, just ready for graduation.
Yes.
commencement, so we're excited about that. And we have a lot of good things happening. Bob Drummond and Dan and others are really leading the effort, so more to come on that. So we're excited about that.
It's a great night, trustees. Make every effort you can to attend that. It's such a wonderful evening. Our next formal meeting of the board is the one we have already scheduled for May 25th. There was a certain urgency to a couple of these items that we wanted to get together and have a quick meeting to approve, but we've done that. Is there anything else for the good of the order or just to bring forward?
Just the last thing. We are hosting, the college is hosting the Western New York Presidents Conference here on the 24th. That's in the morning before our graduation, but I think it's important. Our culinary department is going to also provide the food for the presidents of Western New York. So I'm excited to host them here. So we'll do that and then come to graduation, or I will come to the grad. Maybe I'll bring the rest of the presidents with me too, but I certainly will be there as well. So excited about that.
Miss, hi, Tim. Welcome to a familiar space. Tim Callen. Before we close, just, there is a presentation and program of importance in the community on Friday, Friday morning at Roswell Park, the Healing in Hope event. We've been told of it. I think all the trustees have gotten notice of that. I have signed up to go. It's free and you go and the chancellor is coming back.
Yes.
Which is great to see him again.
Eight thirty. It is sold out. We did send it out to the college senior leadership and others as well, so, but it is sold out is what I hear. So we're excited to participate.
Well, we still attend if we haven't turned up or...
No, I think it's sold out. I put you on a waiting list.
Okay, well, that's fine.
They may do some video extensions or something. They're not going to turn people away.
Awesome.
Yes. So just obviously, May 14th, the anniversary is coming up. And our college probably first among equals in terms of being impacted and caring about that event. And it starts on Friday morning with a very significant community program. And we'll all have to be remembering that throughout the entire community.
Right.
All right. Anything else before I close? If not, I'll take a motion, please, to adjourn this meeting of the board of trustees.
I'll adjourn.
Thank you, Ken. Second?
Second.
All right. Thanks, Marcel. All in favor?
Aye.
We're resolved. And the next thing we will have is our informal meeting, not a board of trustees meeting, but certain of us will be meeting. But Tim Callen, who I'd like to say hello officially to, and welcome. Former trustee of SUNY Erie Community College.
Thank you.
Deputy comptroller of Erie County, and a person who knows something about chargebacks.
So we're off, right?